Good evening and welcome to January 7th City Council Meeting. I'd like for you to please stand. I'd like to introduce Chaplain English. He is our fire chaplain and he will present himself, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please.
Like Councilman Ortiz said, I also serve as pastor of Western Hills Baptist Church out on the west side of town. It's my honor to pray for us this evening and then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could start with prayer this evening, I'd appreciate that. Heavenly Father, as we start a new year, I'm reminded that you have promised to make all things new. I am also reminded as a follower of you that you expect me to be an agent of peace, redemption, healing, and hope to the city. And I know that throughout the scriptures you expect our government leaders, whether they had faith in you or not, to act selflessly, to act to establish order and for the purpose of peace, protection, and justice for the people they govern. And it's for this reason that I come to you on a new year, on behalf of our city, to pray. I pray for our mayor, I pray for our city workers, our firemen, our police officers, and in particular this assembled leaders. I'm asking that you would give them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, to give them a sense of the true needs of our people, to give them a keen thirst for justice and integrity, the supreme confidence in doing what is good and best for our city, and the ability to work together even when there is deep and honest and sincere disagreement. I pray for the agendas set before them, not just tonight, but for the upcoming year. Would you please give them and us assurance that we would do what was best for those who live and work in our great city? And I humbly ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to add that the chaplain is a unpaid volunteer position and we do appreciate him. I'd also like to add that the mayor is on United Airlines. He wanted to try it out for himself. That's why I'm filling in for him this evening. I was told by Suzie on my way in that they made it to Chicago safely and they are on their way back. So I don't think they stayed to enjoy any of the cold, but if we can continue on. There are no proclamations. Presentation, City Manager.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. At this point, I'd like to ask Misty Kruger with Shawnee County Health Agency and Tara Dimick, the owner of E2 Communications, to provide information on sodium reduction in communities.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us. Okay, how do I make this go onto the TV? Oh, okay. We would like to thank you for allowing us to come tonight. We wanted to give an overview of a three-year grant that we've had here in Shawnee County for sodium reduction. It's called Sodium Reduction in Communities. And the reason we want to present to you because some of the work that was done was done with the Topeka Zoo. And so we wanted to give you an update of what happened over those three years. Just a couple of things. Sodium intake reduced, if we could reduce sodium by twenty, twelve hundred milligrams on average per American, we would reduce medical costs by $20 billion a year. And so just to kind of give you an idea of why this is so important for the work that we're doing here. Partners in this grant were the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, Heartland Healthy Neighborhoods, and the Shawnee County Health Agency. We were one of five communities across the US to receive this funding from the CDC. It was a three-year grant and brought in approximately $1.2 million to our community. The first thing we did was conduct a survey to get a baseline idea of what sodium intake was like here in our community. It consisted of three components, a random telephone survey by KDHE, and then two parts at the health agency where people came in and did some data analysis of height, weight, blood pressure. And then we also did a diet recall and tracked what they ate for the last 24 hours to get an idea of what kind of sodium intake they did. We learned through that that eighty-three point six percent of adults did not meet the dietary guidelines for sodium intake here in Shawnee County. Also, nearly one in three adults do not read labels when they're shopping. One of the areas we worked on was procurement, and we did some of that work again at the zoo, which you'll hear about in a second, but also at the Department of Corrections for Shawnee County. And through that, we were able to reduce meals for the inmates in Shawnee County by thirteen percent of their daily sodium we were able to take out of their meals. And I would like to introduce Tara Dimick, who's going to talk a little bit about the work at the zoo. Can we talk fast? We're good.
The first thing, the Topeka Zoo, we worked with for almost the entire three years. They were great to work with. And there's a statement up here that you guys can't read, but basically Brendan came on board because he identified that the philosophy of the zoo was to help all these animals, but yet the people would come and they'd give them hot dogs and chili dogs and all kinds of unhealthy food. So it was just to provide another option, a healthy option in the food. So we worked with Brendan. We brought in a dietitian to work out a new menu. The grant paid for that dietitian, paid for the marketing, paid for the new menu. And then on top of that, we were also able to get another grant for the zoo. And that was from the Kansas Health Foundation. It was for $25,000 and that was able to change some of their equipment. So they got rid of the fryers and they added some additional equipment into their concession stand so that they could provide healthier options in the Topeka Zoo. So on the marketing side, we did the eat like the animals eat, and that was kind of how we developed the marketing plan for the Topeka Zoo. The next portion of the campaign was the media campaign. We utilized local companies to do this. Gizmo Pictures was the one who created the campaign, the visuals, Spot the Salt, Salty, our website, all of those were created by Gizmo Pictures. Our focus groups were done by Creative Business Solutions, so we were able to utilize a lot of local businesses while we were doing this. Here's just our print campaign. We had Read the Labels. It was all focused on talking about tips, tips, the easy ten easy tips to reduce sodium. This was another print. We did a billboard campaign as well. We also did a Spanish billboard campaign and put those in targeted areas because we wanted to make sure that we were talking to our complete population. We had a TV campaign and we had our website. On the website is the ten tips to reduce sodium, the health facts, recipes, all of our advertising material is on the website. We were able to take our advertising material and Boston, Massachusetts has taken it on and to utilize it for their print campaign as well. So stuff that's being created in Topeka is now in Boston. And then there's a final recap video. So we're giving you a fast version. If you want to see what we really did and the impact we made, it's on the website. So you can go and look and see the final recap. And then just obviously, we did all kinds of media and mixed media to make sure that we were talking to our population. And the final thing, the Intercept survey, you wanted to see if you got results or if you didn't get results. We went to the Westridge Mall. That was another great partner for us, as well as Hy-Vee. They worked with us as well, working on gift cards so that we could give those away to people who participated. There was four hundred and seventy respondents and forty-six percent had actually seen the media campaign and could recall it, which is always really important that somebody actually knows whether they were able to see it or not. At the Topeka Zoo, we had a hundred and eight respondents to our Intercept survey that we did, which we literally intercepted people as they were walking by. And seventy-seven point eight percent had a positive reaction to the changes in the menu. And we were wanting to see whether they were happy or whether they were not interested. And they felt that it was a good option for their kids, so.
And the final strategy that we did was environmental support, which was basically working with convenience stores in Shawnee County. So when people went in, they had healthy options to pick from when they went to the store. We had thirteen gas stations take part in this project. We had Hy-Vee, Gas &amp; Shop, Larry Short Stop, and all ten of the Quick Shop locations here in Topeka. They basically signed an agreement with us that they would offer healthy options. We, in exchange, sent a dietitian in to analyze what they had in the store. These are the guidelines that we used for that, to make sure that they were healthy options. And then we tried to use things they already had in the store without them having to go out and purchase new items, except for the exception, if they did not offer fresh fruit, they had to add that to their lineup, which we did have one store that had to add fruit. We went in every month to these gas stations to do spot checks with them, just to make sure that things were stocked and that they were keeping up with their end, but then also to offer technical assistance to them, to say, what do you need from us? How are customers reacting to this? Does your staff even know that we're doing this? And those types of things, to make sure that we were being good partners as well. From that, we were able to get enough data from the sales of those stores to analyze ten of them. So we asked for two years of prior sales data and then every month that this intervention was going on. So from that, we were able to identify four stores that had positive change after intervention. And those four stores, they were actually located either close proximity to or within low-income neighborhoods or food deserts, which is really important that we were able to get to those consumers. Part of that being that they use those convenience stores as their grocery store. And that's where they go to buy their milk, their bread, those types of staple items. So that we were able to get positive change in those stores is really important to the work that was done. Stores sold as high as an eleven percent increase in healthy food purchases over that time. Some of the additional impacts that this grant had, we were able to get some work while Kansas Initiative started here in Shawnee County. There were some grants that came from that work. Some mini-sodium grants were also offered here in Shawnee County. Tara mentioned we shared marketing with Boston, Massachusetts. We were featured on a number of national webinars and calls, especially for our work with the zoo. And so that was picked up across the US to say, how did you do this? What types of things happened there? And just strengthening the partnerships that we had in the community as we moved forward with this. So, thank you. We condensed a twenty-minute presentation into however long that was, so that's why we're talking so fast, to get it done. But if you have any questions, we would be happy to address those for you.
Okay. I really believe you guys need to learn Spanish. I think you'd do a good job. Are there any questions or concerns? Elaine.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I just want to give hats off to you. I was at the Governor's Conference on Public Health in Wichita this spring and May, and you had the Spot the Salt lanyard. So it advertised Topeka at a governor's conference, and I think that's what we want to do more of. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? If none, we thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay. Is that all, City Manager? Does that conclude that?
That concludes the presentations.
Before we have roll call, we have two Boy Scouts in the audience. If we could get them to come up. I'm a big kid component, so I like to see our Boy Scouts come up and introduce theirself and what badge they're working on, what troop they're from. And their troop master, he can come up as well. Bring him up here, too. There you go. Right here on the podium, over here. Right, right, keep going, keep going, keep going. Right there. Thank you Chad. Would you like to introduce yourself and what grade you're in?
I'm Logan Takeman.
And I'm Cole Wells.
Sixth grade.
We're at Wanamaker Elementary.
And what badge are you working on?
Citizenship in the Community.
The badge? Okay. Would you like to say anything, sir?
No, they're just happy to be here. One of the requirements is just to attend a city council meeting, you know, listen and particularly try and, you know, if there's an issue that they find interesting, they have to write a little report to give to one of the counselors of the badge. So it's a step towards getting their Eagle requirement. And all the citizenship merit badges are required for the Eagle rank, and they've already accomplished one. They got Citizenship in the World, so now they're trying to get the other two, Community and Nation, taken care of. So they can take those steps towards their Eagle rank, so.
Well, we thank you for being here. If you wait after the meeting, I'll let you walk me to my car. Does that count? I mean, they used to walk the old ladies to cross the street, but.
No, no, you're too young for that. You're too young for that.
Okay, all right. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. Clerk, if we can have roll call, please.
Councilmember Hiller?
Here.
Mr. Pompos?
Here.
Mayor Ortiz?
Here.
Ms. Everhart?
Here.
Ms. De La Isla?
Here.
Mr. Mannspeak?
Here.
Ms. Schwartz?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
And Mr. Harmon.
All right. City Manager, did you have something before the consent agenda's read?
No, when we get to 5A, we will address it.
The clerk will read the consent agenda.
It is minutes of the regular meeting of December seventeen, 2013, and there is one application for a dance hall license for Skivvy's Bar and Grill located at nine twenty-one South Kansas Avenue.
Okay, what's your pleasure? Michelle? And a motion approved, a second by Nathan. All those in favor, please vote. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
5A and the clerk will read.
A is a public hearing to consider the advisability of establishing a community improvement district for Crosswinds Common located at 12th and Wanamaker Road, and an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson establishing a community improvement district located at 12th and Wanamaker Road, Crosswinds Commons, levying a CID sales tax of one percent within the CID and issuing special obligation bonds. Final reading.
Okay. What's your pleasure, Council? We have one conferee, Bruce Warner. Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. In deference to the conferee, at some point, I would move for deferral for one week. It's my understanding there's some additional details being worked out between the developer and the city. And deferral of one week would be appropriate.
Okay, we have a motion to defer for one week. Is there a second? Michelle seconds. Okay. Mr. Warner, are you here? Would you like to speak this evening or would you like to wait another week to speak?
No, we'll wait another week.
Okay.
I just wanted to appear in case there were questions that anyone wanted to address.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks to the staff.
Okay. All those in favor, please vote yes. I'm a yes.
We have nine yes.
Motion passes to defer for one week. 6A and the clerk will read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson amending the text of the Topeka Comprehensive Metropolitan Plan for the Historic Preservation Element. Final reading.
Okay. What's your pleasure? What's your pleasure, staff? Councilmembers?
You've got some conferees. Do you want a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Mannspeak. Okay, we have three conferees. And the first one is Peter, is it Gierker? Did I chop it up? Followed by Merle Ryder. I did really well?
Yeah.
You're first. I apologize. Come to the podium, sir.
Good evening. My name is Peter Gier. I've lived in Topeka for a very long time, although I probably don't yet qualify for historic preservation. But I do serve as your, on the Landmarks Commission and this last year as its chairman. During that tenure, I have had the pleasure of being a part of the development of the historic preservation plan here in the city of Topeka and feel very strongly that we've had excellent community participation. We've worked very hard to listen to and hear anyone and everyone who has had a desire to speak to this issue on the planning. As a result, I believe we have developed a plan that we hope you choose to pass this evening that gives our Landmarks Commission specifically and also in a very general way, any one or any department in the city of Topeka, a very good broad outline as to how to preserve our city's landmarks. I'm here representing the Landmarks Commission and would be pleased to address any issues you might have right now or later as the evening goes on. I'm happy to come back.
Okay, is there any questions? Or concerns? I say none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Merle? Is it Ryder?
It's Merle.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Deputy Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Merle Riedel. I serve on the Topeka Landmarks Commission. I speak in support of the historic preservation plan developed by Heritage Strategies. It was actually over a year ago that we kind of started this process. The Landmarks Commission applied for and received the Heritage Preservation Grant to develop a much-needed, updated citywide preservation plan. I served on the team that selected Heritage Strategies. The firm was selected primarily for two reasons. We really liked their commitment to soliciting public input in the development of the plan, and they also had an interesting focus on the economic benefits of historic preservation. I feel that's what we got in both cases. The development of this plan included multiple public meetings and focus groups with very positive and constructive input from those people that were there. Topequans express pride in their built environment and a desire to share their story with others. Following the public meeting phase, the Landmarks Commission went through the plan in pretty much, in depth, to discuss feasible implementation methods. Strengths of the plan that I saw was facilitating private sector investment, a focus on preservation at the neighborhood level, making a concerted effort to document what we have and synchronize heritage tourism efforts in order to tell others our story. No single plan can alter the course of a city. However, we feel this plan is valuable to the city and the Landmarks Commission and the residents. It provides guidance for probably what will be the more difficult phase in implementing these aspects. Again, I encourage you to approve the historic preservation plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry for chopping up your name.
Sorry.
Are there any questions? I say none. Thank you. Zach Sneeden. Now, I know that one. Had a good friend, Edie Sneeden.
Thank you, City Councilmembers. My name is Zach Sneeden, and I too serve on the Landmarks Commission. And I'm also an interested citizen in historic preservation. And I look forward to the adoption and beginning that tedious task of implementing many of the recommendations. Obviously, the plan, as you see, has lots of recommendations in it. Those aren't going to happen overnight. But one thing that a lot of us felt that this plan began to bring a unified framework together that brought city entities from code enforcement to economic development to the Planning Department, even into the quasi-private sector of Visit Topeka and those that promote tourism in Topeka, that it starts to bring everybody under a kind of a unified framework for promoting the heritage of Topeka. As you see in the first section, the plan identifies six goals for preservation, and it's not a coincidence that many of these goals are very similar to goals of many other cities. But there's some that are unique to Topeka. The goal number one is make historic preservation central to Topeka's quality of life. Some of the Topeka's most sought-after neighborhoods and places to live are deeply rooted in history. From the neighborhoods of Oakland to Westboro, Potlin, and College Hill, and to the newly-developed Noto Arts District, these places all contribute to the quality of life and are also some of the most old, or some of the oldest and most storied parts of Topeka. Use of preservation, use of private sector and self-interest as engines for historic preservation and revitalization. Some of your most active promoters of advocates for Topeka and possibly one of the largest fanbases on Facebook for Topeka is the Topeka History Geeks. I say daily, but it's almost hourly, they're discussing aspects of Topeka's history. And that private sector, that being just a small example, that private sector, under this plan, you can begin to start to utilize and really mobilize some of those active bodies in preservation. The third goal is to heighten public appreciation of Topeka's heritage through storytelling and other means. Topeka has a very unique place in US history that should make anyone proud to call Topeka home. Far too often, that's not the case. The plan says that embracing our story is really vital to sharing that story with others. Goal number four is have heritage development be a core strategy in city's economic revitalization plan. Each year, the Chamber, many of you know, and some of you have been on those trips, the Chamber of Commerce visits other successful cities similar to Topeka. It's not by a fluke that many of these cities attribute historic preservation to their success. They've shown that historic preservation is a vital tool for economic development of a city. Fifth goal, fully integrate historic preservation into city programs and processes. This puts preservation in the toolbox for economic development, code enforcement, neighborhood and downtown planning, as well as tourism. And then this goal six, make full use of programs available for community revitalization. We can, just from this last year, we can see many examples of instances where, had we had effective preservation programs in place, we might have saved buildings from either being torn down or burned down. So lastly, I just want to ask for you to support.
You're out of time, but go ahead and.
Okay, I just want to ask you to support this preservation plan and really make it part of the day-to-day operations of both of the city council, but then also city staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? Karen?
Just want to give kudos to Bill Feinder and Tim Paris and everybody on the Landmarks Commission and your selection of your consultants as well. I think that you all, just in three comments, have articulated so well how important this is. I think the process that you went through, which Peter talked about, was one of the best and certainly a role model for all of us in future plans of offering all the stakeholders a chance to involve and welcoming them. I know lots of people that came and participated in those sessions that aren't on boards or regularly on other commissions, and they felt that their time was valuable and their investment was worth it. I'm really excited about all the things that you're doing. And also should tell you, for those that weren't here last week, that Elizabeth's suggestion that we get the Capitol as a world heritage site has really caught on fire in some circles. And so who would have thought that that would have come out as well? So, thank you so much. It's a great job. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, let us vote. I'm a yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine yes. Motion passes. The ordinance. The clerk will read. 6B, please.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, providing for the renewal of non-exclusive franchise to American Medical Response to operate an ambulance service within the city of Topeka, which replaces the franchise ordinance codified by City Code Appendix B, Article Six, that will expire December thirty-one, 2013.
City Manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to ask Mr. Sublett to provide a brief overview of the item and answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Sublett?
Thank you. Essentially, item 6B would allow AMR to continue to operate ambulance services within the city through a franchise agreement. This is something that's on every year. We have to grant them the ability to use our streets to provide ambulance services. They're subsidized by the county. They pay a one-time license fee of $25 each of their vehicles registered. I believe each vehicle is registered at $14.
This would just continue to allow the ambulance services to operate as is until December thirty-first of 2014.
Are there any questions? Elaine?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Have we looked at the city having its own ambulance service? And I sent an email to the league and did not get a response about how many cities in Kansas have their own ambulance service. And that is something that I think came out in the campaign when I visited with the fire department, that there would be a question as to if the city would ever look into that. So, and my own experience, personal experience, rang an ambulance in Topeka. I told my husband to take me to the hospital if I'm, you know, because I had a lot of problems. And it was a really old ambulance. Shocks weren't good. They were trying to put an IV in my arm. And so I just feel like we need to really look at the service that we are providing our city residents, the ambulance service.
City Manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember, to give the succinct answers, we're looking at a lot of different options that would avail themselves to the city, both from an operations, from a financial perspective. No specific comment on that one.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? What's your pleasure? Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
There's been a motion on the floor? Second by Michelle? There's been a motion and second by Michelle? All those in favor, please vote. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Motion passes. 7A.
We have one application. It is open after midnight for short stop, the third, located at twenty forty-four Northwest Tyler Street. Staff is recommending approval.
What's your motion? What's your pleasure? It's been moved by. It's been moved by Councilman Campos, seconded by Karen. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please vote. I'm a yes.
We have nine yes.
Motion passes. Okay. City Manager, do you have any presentations?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm very pleased to announce the first of what I think are going to be a couple of more new employees in the Finance Department. Actually, in this particular case, I'd like to introduce Nikki Lee. Nikki started yesterday as the new budget manager for the city. Her job, she comes from the city of Olathe, went through a competitive interview process and just did a fantastic job and impressed everybody. She has a very well-developed technical skill set and a good personality and, and has been through some budget wars. And so we're very excited about having her here. Nikki will, will be managing the annual budget, but more importantly, as we talked about during the budget process last year, making sure that budget isn't a once-a-year activity, that it is a, is a daily activity, looking at the, where we are on track, looking at performance measures and continue to build that. So we're very excited to have her here. And as a preamble, we're doing some interviews, first part of next week, on some other finance positions. So we're very excited about rebuilding the, the team there. That concludes my presentation.
Well, I'm excited she survived the budget wars. Karen?
Oh, just wanted to give out some kudos to Public Works. I think that under the leadership of Mr. Whitaker and Ron Raines and his crew and whoever else are the leadership people that should be named. I know that staff reviewed our guidelines for how we're going to address snow emergencies, very specifically with us and with the public, and it appears they followed them, have been real good about doing what they said they were going to do with the streets, getting the public information out to us and, and so on. So, good job. There'll always be complaints, but it looks like you followed the plan that you'd set out and it's gone well. Thank you.
Mr. Campos?
Thank you, Madam Deputy. First of all, I would like to congratulate United and SkyWest Airlines for initiating service here in the city of Topeka. Also would like to congratulate those who have been hired here in the Finance Department. And as we move forward into the, the heart of the winter season, I do wish Doug and Mr. Raines the best of luck.
Well, I would just like to thank Mr. Whitaker for educating me. I don't know about you guys, but I get a lot of calls on the streets and I sent, I think, a phone message to the city manager and said, what are we doing? And he had Mr., hooked us up. So I said, Doug, what's going on? He said, well, when the streets are 17 degrees, there's nothing you can put on it to melt the ice. And I was like, oh, I can call these people back and tell them that, that you guys have been out there all night. So I want to thank you for educating me and educating the public, because we need to know that. Because we, I know there's a lot of calls that I hear that you guys are doing nothing, nothing. So I, I just want to say thank you. And Ron Raines is the man to have out there, so if you guys break down, he can get you back up and running. All right. Denise? Okay. Michelle?
Just want to echo the sentiments of Councilman Campos and just welcome United and Skyline here to Topeka. I look forward to the airport activity increasing and it's just a wonderful convenience to have in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, like everybody else, have been following the, the public concern on the most recent snowfall. Mostly I follow it on social media, so I'll see a tweet that complains about their street or a comment on Facebook or something like that. And I try to address them as best I can when I come across them. But, so as I'm, I'm looking at that, I'm thinking about our snow removal process and, and are we doing the best possible job that we can? Every time it snows, we're going to have an issue. There, there's no silver bullet for getting the snow off the streets except for sunshine and temperatures above 32 degrees. So the reality is, is that we can point fingers and say, this road should have been done, that road should have been done. That's not really my concern. You know, the way I'm looking at it is, I got an email this morning and the email I got troubled me. And that was that 501 buses were running behind because they were having trouble on streets around public schools. Now, I don't know about you all, but the thought of a child standing at a bus stop, waiting on a bus for 15 minutes because the bus was delayed because of city streets at temperatures near zero, really tears up my guts. So I don't feel like we have done a good job. And when I say we, I'm including myself in that. I can't point the fingers at the guy driving the plow truck if he doesn't have enough plow trucks, if we don't have enough plow truck drivers, if we don't have enough money to buy the, the solution that we're putting on the streets. So my suggestion in talking with the city managers that we review how we're doing things. I also think it's important for us to talk to the guy driving the plow truck and find out what little differences could be made to be more effective. I know one thing that I've heard is that we don't use sand. I think there's some rules against us using sand involving the EPA or something like that. But a plow truck driver will tell you that sand is a quality good, because when it's as cold as it is, yeah, it won't melt the snow, but it provides that grit that your tires can grip onto. So I, I understand that there are a lot of different parameters. The thing I would remind constituents and citizens is that all of these things have a price tag. So I, I said on the radio this morning, I caught a little flack for it, but the reality of the situation is that if we want snow removal to be at a certain level, then we have to budget at that level. So there was a headline that said, the city doesn't have the money to do snow removal. No, no, that's not it. The reality is, is that we could have voted tonight to throw $50,000 more dollars at snow removal, but that doesn't clear the streets. We need proper trucks. We need a good plan. We need the right, you know, stuff to throw down. I know we have 33 individuals who I would like to commend for working 12-hour shifts to get the roads clear over the last couple of days. I want to make sure that we're giving them every tool possible to be successful. As an elected official, I know most of you probably feel the same way. I can handle the criticism for a few bad streets, but I can't handle a kid standing by a bus stop, cold, waiting on a bus that can't get there because the city streets not good enough for him. So I, I'm just hopeful as we move forward, I'm not looking for miracles, but if, if we can just reexamine how we do snow removal, make sure that we're, we're investing the right amount of money in it through the budget process. If there is new equipment that needs to be gotten, if there's new manpower that needs to be gotten, and those conversations come to the council. So a year from now, when somebody's criticizing me, I can say, we tried to do these things last year. The gumption wasn't there for people on the budget. If people don't want to vote to fund those things, then we can't make them happen. So I think that that's the reality that folks have to understand and it's, nobody complains about snow removal in June or July. So it's kind of a tough thing to keep your mind wrapped around, but thank you very much.
Elaine?
Wow, that's a tough act to follow, but I'll try, try it on a little bit lighter note. We attended Ramada Inn on New Year's Eve, stayed here in town, had a wonderful time. It's, I could not believe the number of people that came in from Garden City, Hayes, from Manhattan. It was a draw. And I really think that that's one of the things we need to tout Topeka for more in our area so that we can get more money to, to do things that we need to do here in Topeka. And then on Saturday, my husband and I attended Westridge Mall's Making Moves. And you can go and get a free T-shirt and you can, it's a New Year's resolution to walk as much as you can. And they'll, they'll take the, they give you a pedometer and you try and walk. And I know myself, we haven't had our streets cleared either, but I got out there and did some shoveling and I think it was good physical exercise. So we need to, we heard the salt reduction presentation. So join us on Saturday at Westridge Mall at 9 o'clock on Making Moves. Thank you.
Nathan? Mr. Harmon? Happy New Year, Mr. Harmon. Okay, we have one public comment. That's Mr. Frank Hoag. He's a man that says what he means and means what he says.
I just, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to talk to you tonight. But I, what I wanted to do was to thank those that voted for the business that we have developed in our neighborhood. You know, it may not be the greatest thing in the world for us, but we've got a number of empty buildings that need to be filled and we need to get businesses in. And we've had four efforts or four tries, trying to get people into our neighborhood. One of them, and the things that we run into is, one of them was that there weren't enough parking places on the street. That's Grant Cushionberry's church. You know, maybe we could make a one-way street in there, you know, that kind of thing. And we were planning on having a daycare center in there and that fell through. We had a, we had a previous interest in this fire station there on 17th Street, 17th and Buchanan, that was a lady welder who was going to operate a welding shop out of that. Well, she couldn't make it because she couldn't make enough money out of it. She had too many other things going on for, in her life. So we had a guy on 21st Street that was going to put in a, a supply for housing equipment, old housing equipment. So if you wanted some, some old kind of stuff, you could go and buy it. It discovered that he has to raise his building four, four feet because of the flood plain. Those are the kind of things that we're running into. And I think the thing that concerned me was, is that what I heard was that, or what I heard, was that if we get in trouble with this particular situation, you know, if it doesn't work out for us the way it should, that we're, we're not sure we're going to have city support in, in dealing with resolving the issues. And we definitely need the city's support in, in resolving these issues. So I, you know, I just would like to know if, you know, maybe we make, maybe we make a bad judgment, but at least we tried. And if it doesn't work out, well then, give us some help and support on getting rid of it. I don't, maybe I'm just overreacting to it, but I, I would feel a lot better if I hadn't picked up on that. The other thing is, is that Darren is doing an excellent job on, on, in working with the neighborhoods. The problem we have is that we just don't feel it's moving fast enough. I understand that he had some meetings with, with a committee yesterday and I don't know what came out of that committee, that meeting. But we really need, a long time ago, we asked for the development of, the establishment of a Neighborhood Service Director. And that person is, needs to be on board so that he can talk to the neighborhood people, talk to the neighborhood people that have questions and get, get them answers that they can use to solve their problems. We have reached a point where we pretty well solved most of the easy things in our neighborhood. Now are the times that we're getting into are the very complicated stuff. And, and we really need to move a little faster. We've got houses that, that need to be taken down and we've got taxes that aren't paid. We've got those kind of things. We are also experiencing a drop in interest really in some of the neighborhoods. We, we have a CAC meeting. We're down now to about eight people that, that are, are members of it. The rest of them don't come. If, if there's any way that this can be moved ahead a little bit, and let's get somebody in there and get, get something done, get the neighborhoods talking together and get, get us a resource to get some accurate information out to the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoag. Is there anything else to come before the council? Mr. Man speaker?
Mr. Hoag? Real quick, if I may, thank you for all you do for the neighborhood that you live in. I, I've met lots of community activists and you're one of the most tireless, you know, I, I don't know how you do it, but thank you very much for doing it.
Thank you. Thank you. It's the, the effort and the input that you guys have is what keeps us going, you know? That's what keeps us going.
Karen, would you want to say something?
Oh, I just said thank you last night.
Oh. Well, before we leave, I'll tell you a little story. When I was out campaigning Chad in 2005, I stepped on Mr. Hoag's porch. And he's held my feet to the fire. They're still lit on fire. That's why I said he means what he says and says what he means. And he told me he's going to keep an eye on me and he's done all of that.
The best thing in the course of the years is that when, when I first, well, the early years that I knew Frank, working in Chesney Park, he was so discouraged. And as you can see, Frank has one of the nicest smiles ever. And when Frank started smiling, it was worth it. And we've got a lot to do still. You're right, Frank, but we've come a long way and Chad's right. You're a lot of, part of that. Thank you.
Is there anything else to come before the council? Anything else? If not, this meeting's adjourned.